Welcome everyone to the Waterloo School Board Candidates Forum tonight. Thanks for being here and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Black Hawk and Breamer Counties. My name is Lisa Spiker Munoz and I will be moderating tonight's event. We have with us right now three candidates, we're waiting for a fourth. So we have with us Marty Heath Sinclair and Janelle Ewing who are vying for the at-large position. And we have India Johnson with District Four. And so we're waiting on Aster Williams for District One and when they get here, we'll bring them in as well. So we're gonna, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, we had expulsion meeting today, so he's coming from that, so bear with us.
Oh, thank you for letting us know.
Absolutely, so he's on his way in.
Yeah, so the duties of school board members in effect, okay. So we're gonna start with opening statements, give you about two minutes to just tell us a little bit about yourselves and why you're running and I'm just gonna start with Janelle Ewing.
Hi, my name is Janelle Ewing, I grew up in Waterloo. I moved away, I was a high school band director in Texas because my love is marching band and the pageantry activity and Texas is where the money is for that. So I taught high school band in Texas for seven years and then I decided to go to law school, went to law school, came home to my hometown and I'm now a partner at the Sayre Law Group. I volunteer with the Waterloo West High Marching Band. I got interested in running for the school board when I kind of took a look around and realized that the facilities were pretty inadequate, I think, for what is needed for teachers to keep kids paying attention. We've had, we don't have air conditioning in some of our campuses, we don't have air conditioning in all of our campuses. We have some problems with our elementary schools and I think we could really use an update in a lot of our facilities. I'm not saying that if I get on the school board, I can absolutely change all these things, but rather than be the person in the community that says, "Why is this happening? Why is this happening? Why is this not happening?" I wanted to get involved. My passion, when it comes to teaching, and I still do teach on a volunteer basis, is I understand that teachers want to teach. Teachers want those moments with the kids where they really connect with the kids and really pass on knowledge. The thing that prevents teachers from doing that, in my experience, is distractions. And building problems can be a big distraction. If I'm on the school board, I know that my role is limited. I know that the bandwidth that we have is, you know, policy and approval or disapproval of certain things, but I do want to be a part of understanding and helping remove distractions from teachers so that teachers can do their jobs for the students within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle, and now for opening statement from Marty Heath Sinclair.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm also a native of Waterloo. Did move away as a child when my father changed jobs, but moved back here 26 years ago when I got married. I taught for 10 years on the high school level at various districts, including one year in Waterloo at the Bunker School of Technology, which is ancient history, that was back in 95, 96. It was a wonderful tech prep program, but it was short-lived due to financial situations within the district. I've taught at Hawkeye Community College, this is my 23rd year. I am an associate professor, I teach anatomy and physiology. I'm also the faculty science chair. So education has been a big part of my life. I'm running for school board because I have a vested interest in it. I have two children that have been a part of Waterloo schools. My son graduated this past year, my daughter is currently a junior at East High School. And in the time that they've been in school, I have seen so many wonderful things going forward within Waterloo schools. Updating the facilities, I agree, they have a long way to go with air conditioning and facilities and other things that need drastic updates. But the advent of the Career Center to give students new experiences. My daughter's taking two classes there this semester and I never thought she would be. I want to make Waterloo schools a better place for all students. I know it has its challenges, but I think if I'm just that one voice to get things started, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. And now for a current school board member who's running for reelection, India Johnson.
Good evening, thank you Legal Women Voters for having, hosting this event and thank you for the virtual, those who are watching, thank you for being here. As she said, my name is India Johnson and I'm running for my second term on the school board for District Four. I've been in this community for about 18 years, I'm originally from Des Moines, and I've been actively involved in the community with my husband and my two daughters who attend West High. Like most public servants, I, my involvement started with my daughters at school as a volunteer, PTO, and substitute teacher, and I've always wanted to know how things were done. I wanted to know how things got done in the community and school, which sparked my interest to run in 2017. I wanted to bring those concerns of teachers and parent educators at that time and just bring it to the table and see what we could do. And I believe that exclusive and diverse collaborations are very important in our school district and throughout the communities. So with that said, my involvement of the community extends into my workplace. I'm currently working at the Waterloo Public Library, I've been there for about 14 years, and I see the parallels of the school in the library, same individuals, same families, and they want to be, they want to be able to interact and they want to be valued and they want to be heard. And so I feel like in my position, I can provide that, provide information. So I know that we are going to be venturing into a new chapter, which would be looking for a new superintendent, and I'm looking forward to being able to do that. We've gained a lot of traction with some gains as far as graduation, with the communication with staff and families, and in addition to that, just making sure our students have employability skills in our community. With that said, we still have a lot of work to do. There's still a lot of inequities that we need to focus on. There's still a gap in certain areas that we need to close. And so I want to be in that position to continue to make things happen at the school board table. Thank you.
Thank you, India. And the League has two specific questions that we're going to ask, but I want to remind folks who are watching on Facebook that they can put their questions in and that'll be transmitted to us as well. So we'll start with the first one and I'm going to, just so that everybody has a chance to kind of start first in their questioning, I'll rotate that. So this will go first to Marty Heath Sinclair and the question is, "What is the most crucial problem facing the Waterloo schools and how should it be resolved?"
This led to a lot of thinking on my part. I've been a volunteer in the schools for a lot of years and I've seen the side of schools that a lot of parents don't get to see. But I truly think the biggest problem facing Waterloo schools right now is teacher burnout. Teachers are seeing increased class sizes, they lose their prep time, sometimes they may have only one prep period for the entire week. Maybe they're covering classes for other absent teachers, maybe they're in meetings or dealing with other students. And there's so many more demands placed on teachers at this time with changing curriculum, data collection, testing, and this affects, trickles down to almost every facet in the school. It means that a teacher is able to give less support to the actual learning process for students. And with a teacher that spreads so thin, a student is more likely to fall through the cracks if the teacher is stressed, overstressed, and not being able to give the support necessary to the students. And this makes it difficult for the school district to move forward with things like professional development, new problems. And in talking to friends of mine who are currently teachers, one of the things that I heard over and over was positive toxicity is a big problem, where teachers are encouraged to put on a happy face all the time and make it seem like there's never a problem. And this can be very emotionally draining on the teachers. So what do we do? Well, you have to give teachers time to fulfill tasks, make sure they have a prep time that is sacred, that can't be taken away. Recognize and reward good work. And I know Waterloo schools does this quite well, you see things on the Facebook page very frequently of recognizing teachers for doing things, but I think it needs to be even more widespread. You need to have a good school climate and this depends on the administrators in the building. And if the teachers are overstressed, then administrators tend to be stressed and it doesn't create a good overall atmosphere. Don't discourage teachers taking personal days. I know in another district, not in Waterloo, there was recently a school board meeting where the school board was trying to find ways to discourage teachers from taking their personal days just because subs were so few and far between. And, you know, even though they only get a few personal days a year, that one-day break can sometimes be exactly what they need. And in these days of COVID, so many businesses are offering monetary sign-on bonuses to people. What about giving monetary awards to these teachers who have toughed it out through COVID, who have done what they needed to do and made those changes on a dime? I mean, I experienced that too, but my students are adults. When you're working with small children and trying to transition to all-virtual classrooms and they did it with, with great skill, you know, there were bumps in the road, but they were able to, to do what they needed to do and get through it. And they need to be rewarded for that. So many teachers have left the district and have left teaching because of what's gone on with COVID. And how about a thank you for those that are still here and that did what they needed to do when the time was tough? Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. And I wanted, I wanted to just let folks know that Joan Webster-Bohr has joined us and she will be serving as our timekeeper. So, yeah, she'll be giving a heads up, yeah, nod to the watch. So the same question for India Johnson. "What is the most crucial problem facing the Waterloo schools and how should it be resolved?"
Thank you. Like Maria, I think there were, Marty, excuse me, there's a lot of variables to think about with that question. I've, one that I thought about was mental healthness, excuse me, mental health and the challenges that we are facing, especially come out of a very tough year for a lot of students, families, staff members. And I'm just making sure that we're addressing the needs of our students. You know, one out of five students is going to have some type of mental health and that number they addressed was prior to COVID. So just imagine what a lot of these students are dealing with right now. And so I feel like as a district, we need to address some of these issues. You know, these young people are gonna be young adults soon. So I feel like we need to have and provide some tools and their toolbox so when they become adults, they'll have something. So I know it's very challenging. I know that as a board, we have hired, tried hiring new counselors, mental health counselors. We've worked very well with Black Hawk Grundy Counseling, but there's still a huge need. We have a very diverse population of students here and so having a diverse counseling staff also is necessary to do that too. One of some of the things that we can continue to do is just making surely implement safe spaces for our students. You know, they need breaks, you know, and being closed up and doing virtual last year brought out a lot of things that a lot of students weren't aware of. I think of my own personal daughter who did not do very well at virtual at all because she's a single person. A lot of mothers are like that. In addition to that, provide resources, you know, making sure that our libraries have adequate funding so they can have resources inside the library that students can have picture books set, recognize mental health, or graphic novels, or young adult fiction that they can go and read about and find themselves in it and understand at their level, you know, this is a mental health and it's not a dirty word. You know, we sometimes have always stigmatized the word mental health as it's something negative and we need to teach and understand that it's not. So as a district, I know we need to continue to look at all types of avenues, bringing in counselors, finding resources, providing safe space, and again, making sure that we don't have the burnout that Marty had mentioned with our staff too because they're dealing with it as much as families and students. Thank you.
Thank you, India. And the same question for Janelle, the question, "What is the most crucial problem facing the Waterloo schools and how should it be resolved?" Oh, Janelle, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, first of all, after hearing the other two candidates here speak, I am honored to be a part of a panel of candidates who have a lot of the same opinions as I do about what needs to happen here in Waterloo schools. The thing that I would say is that we need, we need to remove distractions from teachers. Teachers are the power here that are creating what needs to happen within our school. So number one, as I said before, facilities are really, really important because what happens with a facility creates a lot of, or removes a lot of the distractions that happen for teachers. When it's 105 degrees in your classroom, you can't create that connection with students and you can't get that, that love of subject from students that we need to have. When your campus is 105 degrees inside parts, you can't keep equipment in a good state of repair if it's constantly in heat and humidity. So I really think that facilities are a really important part of what we do and removing distractions from teachers. Other things like making sure that buses aren't late. When kids are coming in late, it is really hard to keep cool, calm, and collected and make sure that you're making that connection with students. Other things like teacher pay, other things like that, making sure that teachers are properly rewarded for what they're doing and not over-micromanaged. Now, as a school board, we only have one employee. Our one employee is the superintendent of schools. And I think by the time that the election happens and we're installed, I believe that the search for the, the search for the superintendent is still going to be happening, is still gonna be going on. And so that we will have a say and a choice in what happens with that. And that's why I think it's really important that we consider who we have on the school board because it's our one employee who's making a lot of the decisions for what is going to be happening as far as the facilities, the money, what's going on for our teachers to have those distractions removed so they can really reach our children. Time in school is worthless unless those teachers are reaching our kids. So I really believe that teachers are the one thing that's the most important to our school, attracting them here and rewarding them and making sure that the facilities that they're teaching in and what they're, the way that they're reaching all of our students is really, really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. And Sherry, if you or Mike have a chance to resend the link to Aster Williams or Jean, if you can do that, I think he's having trouble getting the link. So he can hopefully join us. And then I also want to remind folks who are watching via the Facebook stream, if you have questions for any of the candidates, to go ahead and post those in the Facebook event and we'll get those questions asked. Our second question, and we'll start with India, is how should the Waterloo schools deal with COVID-19?
Thank you. How will the Waterloo schools deal with COVID-19? Honestly, the best way they can, it's a whole new territory. There are so many different directions in handling it. I will say though, the best way, I feel like as far as seeking direction logistically, I think that, you know, speaking to Black Hawk County Health was a, you know, having them on your team has been essential. They provide data, they provide insight as far as the health around our county. I think also it was a very smart move to look at local and state hospital beds, you know, look at those numbers, are they being filled up, are they not? And so considering those numbers are very important. I appreciate, I appreciate the stance of family choice in addition to that and keeping students safe. And I'm glad that as a district that we decided to have a virtual option because a lot of districts didn't even have that. And so providing that for families so they can make the choice that they want to keep kiddos at home and, you know, be able to navigate that safely in their own home. I do appreciate that we've done that. And we still have quite a number of families who are still using virtual. I appreciate the district also providing weekly updates as we are looking at each building and providing that for families and that has been very important. So again, families can make a choice of what they want to do. And still encouraging masking, my daughter's still masked, you know, maybe not all her friends do, but they still have a choice to be able to do that. And as we move forward into the season, you know, we might have to pivot again, you know, we have to be prepared, but, you know, it is, was quite difficult for many districts to pivot so quickly, but we did it. And now that if something does change, we're more prepared than we have ever been. So I believe that as a community and as a district, you know, making sure that we're communicating to families, but also keeping those communication lines with all those who are able to read this, do the science, talk to doctors, talk to, again, our public health, and just staying on one accord to make sure that what we're doing is best for the kiddos. Thank you.
Thank you, India. And the same question to Janelle Ewing. "How should the Waterloo schools deal with COVID-19?"
I think the Waterloo School Board and the schools right now have cut a really good middle path in taking account of what's going on with CDC and what's going on with Black Hawk County Health and monitoring within their own buildings as far as exactly what's going on with kids and families and what the percentage is of kids who are exposed to COVID and whether they're gonna mask or whether they're gonna shut down the facility for a certain amount of time. I think that's a really awesome middle path that takes account of both what is happening as far as the science and the current research, but also what is going on in our communities right now and their communities, their small elementary schools and so forth, as far as who has COVID and what the percentage is of kids or families that are dealing with COVID right then, or teachers, and deciding campus to campus whether to shut down the campus for a little while or take other measures. And I think that that's a really local-based option and it's still safe and it's, it's safe for the kiddos and students and the teachers and everyone that's involved. So I think that we should consider continuing to take that middle course as we move forward into the next year.
Thank you, Janelle. And the same question for Marty Heath Sinclair. "How should the Waterloo schools deal with COVID-19?"
Well, as a scientist, and I always err on the side of science, if it were just my decision, everybody would be vaccinated, everybody would be wearing masks. But that is a very difficult road to take. I very much appreciate the, the matrix that the district has carved out with the percentage of each building that has positive testing with the county's level of positivity. And it gives a very directed look at what's going on locally with COVID. It's, it's uncharted territory, like the other candidates have said. But as a district, we've proven that we can be resilient when we need to. We can make that pivot, we can do what we need to do. It may be difficult, people may have problems adjusting, but the fact that right now people are encouraged to wear masks is good. People are encouraged to be vaccinated. And the district has made vaccinations more available to people by having some local clinics. And looking at what's happening in each building and in the county to decide how we're going to take things in each school. There's so many studies out there that show masking in schools makes such a difference. Nationwide, they found that counties without masking requirements saw a much higher pediatric COVID-19 level, as much as twice as high as the surrounding areas. So I think it's something that we definitely need to keep track of and be able to adjust our stance on it as situations change. If we have to go to totally virtual again, we did it once, we know we can do it again. If we can keep our students in school wearing masks, all the better for it. But a lot of it is just keeping track of what's going on and being able to adjust our stance based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we don't have any Facebook questions yet, so I will just ask if any League members who are on the call have any questions at this point? Anybody have any questions? We, well, we, we're also wondering if, oh, do you have a question, Sherry?
Sherry, yes, I am just wondering, given the constraints right now, do we have any idea what percentage of our teachers are vaccinated?
Does anybody have any knowledge of that?
It's more than half, I know for sure it's more than half. More than 50% are vaccinated. They, as I think Marty had mentioned, I know we do have our public health that a lot of teachers go to, this health that they can go and get vaccinated. So they do have, have options, but I am confident to say that we, more than 50% are vaccinated at this time.
I have a difficult time understanding. League is a nonpartisan organization. I don't want to assign blame or gain any kind of blame, shame, whatever, but it's difficult for me to understand how school boards are keeping even a cool head given all of the contradictory signals they're getting at the state, county, and local level. And I just, I just wondered if there are some districts where more needs to be done, or not districts, schools where more needs to be done to encourage, just to protect the kids. I have a girlfriend who's a nurse in Kansas City and has been telling me awful stories every week about the children that are being admitted and it's just not pretty.
I do have a question. How is Kansas City as a whole, as a city, doing as far as the mandate? And I only ask that question is, you know, when you have a federal mandate on a bus and you have to wear the mask.
Yes. Well, but when you have signals from the federal and then you have signals at the state level.
It's challenging, it makes it very challenging.
Yes, it, it, it has been. And you know, I have to just tell you, we appreciate all of you, teachers and students. teachers and school board members and candidates. I cannot think of a more difficult time to be in education. And as a retired educator, my heart goes out to anybody who has been teaching or managing uh teachers or working with teachers in the past two years. Just the toughest circumstances altogether.
So we have a couple of questions um that we're going to go ahead and ask of um all three of you. Um, one of them is thinking about the House File um eight oh two bill, um divisive concepts that passed at the State House. And I'm wondering if you can just kind of talk about your thoughts about that relative to the fact that Waterloo is one of the more diverse um communities in the state and therefore our school district, our school buildings are made up of a um diverse group of kids. How do we reconcile that bill um against, you know, uh, teaching truth in our schools? And I guess um, I don't know where we were in our rotation. I think Janelle is first.
Marty, have you had a chance to go first?
Yes, I have.
Okay. All right. Then, again, what I point to is the teachers. What we need is teachers who are critical thinkers and teachers who are going to teach critical thinking. There's a lot of politicizing about names of ways to teach history. There are so many ways to teach history. History is not just facts. History is perspective. Um, personally, I think that we should teach history from the perspective of as many people, humans, as we can. And I think that there have been a bunch of perspectives that have been ignored for a long, long time. Um, but I I don't agree with labels on um things that that, things that get short labeled, that get soundbited. I think we need to search out and find teachers who are going to critically teach history, critically teach critically, cri- critically teach thinking to kids and um teach kids how to be active seekers of all kinds of knowledge, active seekers of all kinds of facts, active seekers of what has been missing from the history that they've been taught. Um, the legislature can legislate all they want, but they really can't legislate the teaching of of history. They they really can't legislate the teaching of critical thinking. And we have a lot of critical thinking to teach our kids. We have a lot of, one of the great things about American education is we do more than other countries, teach our kids to ask why and how. And we need to continue doing that and we need to continue making sure that our kids are critical thinkers about history especially. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marty, same question. I know it was kind of vaguely pulled, put together when I asked it, but um cut something kind of reflecting on the House File eight oh two bill um in connection to who we are as a come, as a diverse community.
Yeah, we are such a diverse community and I don't think a lot of people realize what a richness that brings to this community. And we need to honor that diversity. And like Janelle said, we have to look at history, but not just history. This concept is cross-curricular. Teaching about scientists from different perspectives. Um, teaching about people who have been important in music from various perspectives makes the educational experience so much more um enriching for our students. My daughter is very much a musician and she comes home and she talks about different musicians that she has researched and very, very diverse musicians. Um, and even though she's kind of focused on music, to see that across all curricular um areas is so beneficial to the students. But it depends upon the teacher. It depends upon um the background of the students because not all students at this point in time have developed that critical thinking on their own and they need to um be taught to nurture that and to appreciate things from so many different sources so that they can carry this forward in their life. Because this is just the first place in their life where they're really being exposed to a lot of different ideas. And I think it's a huge disservice to students to tailor things down and not allow them to have all of these rich experiences across the curriculum to to enrich their lives as they go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And India, if you could also speak to that connection between our diverse community and um how we reconcile that with uh the House File eight oh two bill?
Uh, sure. Thank you. Um, I think like the candidates um spoke volumes. I mean, very true. We do live in a very diverse community and it's disappointing that, you know, this ban, the this bill has passed, especially at a time where it is so needed. I mean, it's very critical. Um, you know, we, it's very enriching to know that, you know, we are one of the most diverse areas in Iowa. You know, ninety-nine percent of Iowa is white and but to be part of a community that we have everybody, why would we not want to learn about as much as possible, you know? And to pass this bill at this level and then when you graduate, they don't want diversity trainings. You know, all the whole nine yards, it's just very convoluted and disappointing. Um, and it does make it challenging. So because like Marty was mentioning, when do you stop? You know, do you stop and say, I'm not going to play this music and give you the history behind this? You know, you, you really can't do that because it's cross-cultural. I mean, it's all levels. It's all at every section of learning that you need to learn about something and somebody else, another part of history, women's history, um, African-American history, you know, we have amazing Burmese population, French, I mean, it's across the world. It's just so important to know. And so it does make it challenging to be in a classroom and to be lim- and I, I think that's the big part that I'm think is the disappointing part, the limit that you, this is put a cap on, like, we can't do this, you know? And so how do you, how do you teach them? How do you, it's, how do you give children the tools to be able to interact with other people if they're so limited? Um, so I don't know what the next term will look like. I don't know what the next chapter will be, who else will be able to m- make this change. Um, but I do hope that we can still prepare our students to know that we are just not in an uh, a uh state that's ninety-nine percent white. We are more than that. And so when they leave this, they need to know that. So that's it.
And just as kind of a side note to that, you know, the twenty twenty census data came out. And while Waterloo um didn't gain or lose population, we stayed about the same. Um, we did become, I think, more, even more diverse, right? And so if it weren't for some of the new populations, as India mentioned, the Burmese, the Congolese and other groups, um, I or Waterloo would see um some shrinking in population. So that's just so important to our community. Um, there's another question that um, some of you talked about mental health and mental illness issues even before, among students, even before um COVID. And um, the question is somewhat connected to that um in terms of some of the issues that students have to face today, specifically around bullying and gun violence. Um, as a school board member, um, what are some things that you could do or bring about to address some of those very grave issues that students are facing? And we'll start with Marty.
Okay. Um, these things are things that every parent hopes their child never has to experience. But unfortunately, the world that we live in has changed so much over the past twenty, thirty years. Um, with the concept of gun violence, um, prevention is the big key there. Um, and I think our districts have done a very good job of making sure that our buildings are accessible to those who need to come into the buildings, but that are secure to keep people who shouldn't be in the school out. Um, my dad always said, the only thing a lock does is keep an honest person honest. And if somebody really wants to get into the school, somebody will. And that's where preparation on the side of the teachers and the students comes in. Um, it doesn't need to be pervasive training because I think that would be disturbing to students also. If you have daily lockdown drills or even weekly, that can be very um wearing on their mental health. Um, but they need to be prepared um so that they're not af- afraid if something like that would happen. With bullying, that's a much more individual kind of issue. And I think teachers and administrators need to be more sensitive to things like that. Um, I've heard many stories over the years of people, students who say, well, this person was bullying me and I went to the administration and they didn't do anything about it. Being aware of it and actually acting on it and knowing how to deal with with a bullying issue so that our students are protected and those that are doing the bullying are educated so that that doesn't become a lifestyle for them going forward. Um, but it has become much too pervasive in in many schools. I haven't heard of of a lot of it from things that my children have said, but I know that many people have been exposed to to bullying and what and it's, it's an interpretation too, because what one person may believe is bullying, you tell it to somebody else and, oh, well, that's nothing. But to the person it happened to, it was a big thing. And it, we need to honor that and and help to solve the situation so that everybody can move forward in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. India, same question. Um, how can school board members um help address issues of bullying or gun violence or other things that obviously weigh on students' minds?
Um, from, I believe that, you know, school boards are in a position to encourage definitely the relationship. I think that's one thing that's, I know that I push for, you know, I think students need to know that there are safe spaces or individuals that they can go to and speak to and talk to. And um, you know, if there's a situation that happens at a school, know, feel that they have a place that they can go and share and tell what they, what's going on in their heart or what's going on in their situation. And um, many times they can, those situations can be squashed. They can um not go to another level if they know they have a safe space to be able to discuss. And that's one thing I know that it truly should be encouraged. I know that we encourage it. I know that I encourage it, you know, to make sure that you're building relationships with our students, you know? I know that I'm sometimes critical with the SROs, but the SROs do have a role. And at the elementary level, they do a very great, they do a very good job of building a relationship with the students. Uh, again, um, when you have this relationship that's built, you know, sometimes you can have dialogues about, you know, bullying and what that looks like and um identifying um ways to avoid or not have that or, you know, just talking things out, which is so important. Um, as they move into middle school and high school, you know, the relationships are different, you know, uh, groups are different. Um, and so the conversation has to be different too, because there might be a violence at um, a element that might be added to when it comes to guns and things of that nature. So again, it may not be the SROs who might be in that position to talk, but it might be a teacher that you have a relationship with or a principal or something. So I'm big on the relationship building and maintain that with students. Um, it just takes them on a whole nother level because they can't feel safe. You know, you have to think about our students in school for seven and a half hours a day to eight hours, if not longer. And so they have to feel like they have a safe space to be able to go. Um, those who feel like they're being bullied or those who are being bullied, they also need safe spaces, you know? And so that conversation, that relationship is very critical. And so I think as a school board member, we need to um encourage that with our staff from from the administrative level to all the way down to the lunch lady, to the lunch man, to um candidates, all of them, because you, it just takes one, really. They can change throughout the day, you know, to say hi, how are you doing? Um, but we have to be mindful of those relationships that we're building with our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And Janelle, the same question, speaking a little bit to how um school board members can address issues of bullying, gun violence, et cetera.
We're at such a ten thousand mile uh above everything view that I think the thing that we can focus on is master teachers and attracting master teachers. Because master teachers keep the students busy more than inexperienced teachers. And when it comes to discipline and when it comes to making sure what your kids are doing, uh, keeping the kids busy, keeping them engaged and keeping them working um keeps kids from bullying. Um, I mean, there will always be terrible opportunities on the bus or other places where teachers aren't around. But master teachers will also promulgate the idea that bullying is not acceptable and that everyone is a valid part of society and that every human being is valid. So again, I say, attracting master teachers who can keep the students engaged and busy and promote the idea that everyone has value and everyone is valuable and that bullying is not acceptable. Um, more prevention, as much cure as we can do, of course. But again, on the school board, what we do is we vote on policy and we approve money expenditures here and there and everywhere. And we hire our one employee who is the superintendent. So um promoting the idea that bullying is not okay, promoting the idea that we need to attract master teachers and hiring the proper employee are all things that we can do at this ten thousand mile level to make sure that bullying is reduced within Waterloo schools. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a question that came in from Facebook. And so I'm going to read it verbatim and we'll start with India and then um Janelle and then Marty. Um, the question is, do you agree or disagree with canceling or otherwise revising historical facts in the name of quote unquote wokeness or current political correctness? I'll read it one more time. Do you agree or disagree with canceling or otherwise revising historical facts in the name of wokeness or current per- political correctness?
Thank you. I don't agree with erasing. Um, I'm a person about, um, I'm believer of facts, uh, information, um, data, um, sources, making sure that you're sourcing those. Um, I'm, and so the, doing your research and making sure that things are aligned are very important. And so canceling, it's only not giving the full picture. It never does, you know? Um, so if there's a s- if there's a statement, a story, back it up with extra facts, um, find your sources, making sure those are correct. So I don't really understand the woke as what they said in the um quote necessarily, but I'm not big on eliminating information if it's not necessary, especially if facts tells the truth. If you can go back in history, if you can find the definite of where the source came from, I think that's very important. If you, and I'm assuming this is in the questions in line, maybe, you know, what being taught in school, things of that nature. Um, find your sources, you know, find your data, you know, we're mu- much data driven right now with COVID. You know, make people want to know their sources, back it up. Also, erasing it does nothing for you because uh if I know most students, if there is uh something that's erased, they're going to go find it anyway. And so they, they don't want to find the truth behind it themselves. And so tell them, you know, and so, and make, but make sure that you have the data and sources to back it up. So that's my answer. Thank you.
Janelle, same question.
Sure. So we have four years with these kids. We have eight semesters with these kids in high school. I'm a high school teacher. I was a high school teacher, so I focused on high school. And I don't think the question of, I don't know, what we teach and how really comes up until junior high and high school. I think we're focused on colors, math, you know, all that stuff in the, in the early grades. And I think that where this question is coming from is probably coming from what we teach our kids in junior high and high school. And I asked the person that asked this question, how many true facts are there? Could, could you, could you list all the true facts for me? There are so many true facts that we're not going to be able to teach all the true facts to our kids from junior high through high school, through those, I don't know, seven years that they get in those upper grades. The question is, to reframe the question, which true facts do we teach in that time? And why do we teach them? We pick our facts that make up stories in, in history, in music, in, in all of the, what we quote unquote call the softer disciplines that aren't, you know, math or science or even in math and science, making sure that we focus on all of the different creators of the maths and sciences. But I think the question here is, which true facts do we want to teach? And my answer to that is, we want to teach a collection of true facts and true stories that give our kids a broad reach of critical thinking and enough for them to get along in a diverse world. So I don't think it's about ever about omitting facts or deleting facts. The world is huge. The amount of true facts is so broad. We could never, we could never put a book to that or a set of encyclopedias to that. But we need to choose our facts and our stories and our histories that we teach to our kids very carefully so that they have enough to stand up in the world when they graduate from Waterloo schools. And so I reframed the question for you. Sorry if that's not the question that you wanted answered, but I think that's the relevant question. Thank you.
Hey, and thank you. And Marty, the same question.
History is messy. And like both India and Janelle have said, there's so much out there. How do we decide what, what truth, like Janelle said, do we teach our students? I mean, myself as an educator, I can't teach my students everything about my subject area. It would take much longer than the two semesters I have them. But we need to be aware of all the different viewpoints and be able to present history that honors those viewpoints and speaks truth. And if you speak something that is not truth, your students are going to find it out faster than anybody else. Students today are master researchers. They have their phones in their hand and they will find something faster than the words come out of your mouth. And we have to be prepared for that and be able to give them the knowledge they need, not just from one viewpoint, but from multiple viewpoints to prepare them for everything they will face in this world. Yeah, there. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I think we might be getting close to closing statements. If there are no more questions, I'll wait just another twenty seconds and see if anything is coming through Facebook. In the meantime, is everybody ready for fall? Upcoming holidays? All right, well, let's go ahead. Thanks, Augusta. Nothing from Facebook right now. So let's see, my order. Oh, my gosh, my order shifted. I think, is it back to, no. India first, right? Okay, you're keeping better track than I am. Thank you. So closing statements, two minutes for what you want to tell us about why you are or would be a good candidate for a school board. And so we'll start with India.
I just want to say thank you again. I really enjoyed this. I didn't get to do this the first time because we were uncontested and be, at the time, weren't sure what we were doing. But with enough time under my belt, I do appreciate the four years that I have ran for school board. It has been mind-blowing. It's gone by incredibly fast. And, you know, the first three years, you're just trying to get your sea legs underneath you. But I know there's a lot more work to be done. Like I said before, you know, we're going into a new chapter with finding a superintendent. And but I'm more so excited to take what has been done and take it to another level, adding more career opportunity at the Career Center. You know, those are coming and I'm looking forward to adding and being part of that program. In addition, making it more diverse, you know, we are recruiting more, not just from inside, but you know, other districts are coming in and using that space, which is fantastic. I'm very much looking forward to that. I know that we have also implemented, which many people have asked, a volunteer portion that allows people to allow the students to get volunteer opportunity starting at the elementary and the middle school level. So I'm really looking forward to having that opportunity to see how that flourishes. So I am hopeful and glad to be in a position where I am. You know, Sherry mentioned, you know, this is a very challenging time, but it's very exciting also because I have the pleasure every day to see graduates who have gone through the Waterloo schools and just to see so much depth and difference that has happened when you're fifty years old versus someone who's twenty-five and they've gone through the system. And you can really tell some of the things that we've done and implemented have really surfaced as they are young adults. And so I'm excited to see what the next four years will, will have, what will happen with graduates and the experience that they're doing, having now and what they will be as little, big people in our community working. So again, my platform is that building relationships, making sure that, you know, those who may not be able to come to board meetings or have the opportunity to speak, that I can speak for them and bring those ideas to the table and be able to share those and give that opportunity and speak for them if needed. So thank you for tonight. I appreciate it. It's great.
Thanks, India. Janelle, two minutes?
Thank you also for having me here. I have to say that when I was a teacher teaching, I had no idea that such things were happening, that, that people campaigned to be on the school board and that people had opinions and that those opinions would affect what I did as a teacher or what my daily life was going to be like as a teacher. But I'm starting to learn what's out there and what's happening. My platform is that I want to remove as many distractions from teachers and especially get as many master teachers here in Waterloo as we possibly can. Our kids deserve master teachers. Our kids deserve what master teachers can do. And I'm not just saying people with a master's degree, that's not what that is. That's teachers who have been in the profession for a really long time and have a great love for it. And it's apparent by the way that they teach and by the way that they inspire our students. That's really important. We need to attract those here. And we need to remove as many distractions as possible by having our facilities up to date, by making sure that we have the proper vendors for such stuff as transportation and lunch and, and all those things to remove as many distractions from our teachers teaching our students as possible. Those master teachers can keep our students engaged, can keep our students busy, can make their time on task more and more important. And not just, there, there's just too much time at school, I think, that is spent with a teacher who's exhausted or a teacher who needs a break going, study on your own or be on your own or I'll be in the room with you. But we need teachers who are teaching all the time and are empowered to do so and are supported and doing so. On the school board, we have a limited bandwidth as far as what we can do. Basically, what we can do is approve policy that's put in front of us to either approve or deny. We can hire our one employee that is the superintendent and choose the right one who's going to do what I'm asking and what's on this platform and what we all want for our students. And we can approve or deny expenditures to make our facilities better. And so if I am elected to school board, that's going to be my platform to do whatever I can, to hire the right person, to approve the right policy, to approve the right expenditures that are going to attract master teachers here so that our students' time on task and their time at school is as valuable as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janelle and Marty, for your two-minute closing statement.
Waterloo schools are exciting now. Hasn't always been that way. In past years, Waterloo has struggled with their reputation. But the schools have done so much to turn that around and do new, exciting and innovative things. And if I'm elected to the school board, I would like to continue that. Bringing somebody to be the superintendent that will have that, that vision to be able to move us forward for our teachers, for our students especially. I'm in a unique position that I get to see graduates of Waterloo schools on a daily basis, continuing their education and working towards their careers. And even though I see students from many, many different schools, many states, even different countries, our Waterloo schools are producing quality students that are going forth into the future to do great and wonderful things. And we need to continue that and help enhance that experience for more students as time goes on. I think Janelle's right. We need a lot of well-qualified seasoned teachers. We need teachers that will help mold these students. We need a superintendent that will have the vision to guide us. One comment that I heard when I was talking to another group was that many times, school board members just okay what the superintendent puts forward. And I don't want to be that kind of school board member. I tend to think about things and look at the facts and make a decision based on those facts in what will be best for our students, our teachers and our community. Because we have to think of these students as more than just students from pre-K to twelve. They're going to be community members and we need to prepare them for that and prepare them to be lifelong learners. Thank you.
Thank you. And so on behalf of League of Women Voters of Black Hawk and Bremer Counties, I want to thank all of our viewers on Facebook. This will be uploaded or continue to be viewable, right? And I want to thank the candidates again. The two candidates for the at-large position for Waterloo School Board are Janelle Ewing and Marty Heath Sinclair. And the candidate for District Four is India Johnson. And the candidate for District One, Astor Williams, who was unable to join us. But I think there's a note that he will be able to respond through the Facebook discussion. So if you go to the, where this is being recorded, that'll be, continue to live on the League of Women Voters page and folks can engage in conversation there. All right? Thank you all. Good luck. Have a great night and do good things.